Okay, perfect.
All right.
Yes, I can, thank you.
Hello.
All right, it being six o'clock, call this meeting the Chelmsford School Committee order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being livestreamed by Charleston Telemedia and posted to CBS website for interested committee members to access and watch. In-person public participation will be taking place tonight in accordance with the Chelmsford School Committee Public Participation Policy. Anyone speaking tonight during the public input portion of this meeting has notified the superintendent's office of the desire to speak has been provided with these guidelines. Upon request, written comments received no later than 12:00 PM on the date of this meeting will be read and made part of the record of the meeting during the second public comment session. So, welcome to this meeting of Chelmsford School Committee. Just for those watching at home, member Diana LeBeau is going to be zooming in with us tonight. So, um, well, Diana. So, our first order of business is to approve the minutes for our meeting on July 22nd.
I make a move that we approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of July 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Second, okay. Any corrections on those? All right, we'll do it as a roll call just because of Diana. So, Susan.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Maria.
Aye.
Aye, and Diana?
Aye.
Perfect. All right, um, we have no student reps yet, so any good news to share?
You know, I didn't really think about good news. I was like, good news, it's August, we're opening up schools soon. Now, we're in pretty good shape for getting school ready and a lot of the projects are happening and we're starting to see people filtering in just to say hello, check in, get our systems up and ready. So, good news is, school year's starting soon.
Great. Anybody else have any good news to share? Okay, all right, we don't have anybody here for public comment, so we'll move right on to new business.
Thank you. Yep, the first up tonight, Christine Clancy, IDBW Director. We're going to invite up to just share the fourth quarter. We're going to summary with us as the year ends, so thank you for coming.
Thank you. Should be all set right here.
Yep, you're good to go.
All right, so this is the fourth quarter update. So, this will be the first full year of having updates. And as you know, we moved to a new software program for tracking work order systems in January. So, we kind of did half the year reporting on our old system and then half the year on this new system. So, we hope as we have more data put into this database, we'll be able to in the future year and moving forward have more analytics to kind of report back to you. But this, and I put some information into a PowerPoint slide and also I have another update to give you on an, we did an electrification roadmap study, which I'll get into too after this update. So, this fourth quarter, which covers between April 1st and June 30th, we track the overall work orders by location and by trade. So, this is a summary of the work order by location and showing it in tabular form and then graphically. It tracks in terms of, it looks like we're generating between like 350 to 450 work orders each quarter, depending on the, you know, it varies slightly between each quarter. This quarter, it was 437 work orders, which was one of the higher quarters. And my guess too is as we plan for the summer, a lot of people are putting in some requests. Also, to note that we've had the lowest percent completion this quarter and I think part of that is a lot of these projects we knew. So, an example, and I'll get into the trades, like flooring, we knew we had to do flooring this summer. So, I suspect that we'll see when we do the first quarter reporting for this next year, we'll kind of see a lot of those work orders completed. So, it's broken down by school here and it's overall, it's 72% combined, you know, overall completion, 314 work orders completed. It varies school to school, varying between 60% complete up to 84% complete. I think the next slide kind of breaks it down a little more. So, we have 20, 21 or, yeah, 21 trades that we're now reporting before, I think we only had 10 or 12 for the previous system. So, we've, you know, anywhere from athletic fields to delivery and then snow and ice and then all the trades, carpentry, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, we're tracking all of those work orders. And so, again, the total is the same, but this is broken down by all the trades. Anything like delivery, those are more instantaneous complete, those are completed, so that's 100% completion. We fortunately don't have any snow or ice problems right now, so that's also not reportable. If you look at flooring, we had five requests that quarter and none were completed because again, a lot of these, some of these work orders were generated knowing that we would be completing them in the first quarter of the next fiscal year. And then other, some other items too, like roofing kind of jumped out to me where we had six work orders and three only. And some of these are tied to some larger projects, whether we're completing them this summer or we're designing them for, we have a lot of roof work designed, being designed right now and planned for next year. So, when we look at the work orders, we kind of look to see, well, what's the oldest work orders and how can we try to fast-track that to have it completed, you know, so we have the least amount of days aged. And that's, we're hopeful for the next year to report some more of the information, we just have to have the data available to report it. So, this is a quick summary of the year in completion. So, in the year, it was 1,540 total work orders and these are all school work orders. We also track this across our DPW sites. I would say we mostly use it for the schools because that's how it started, but we're, we are using it for all the other buildings in town as well. So, 1,540, 81% complete. I think that the trade, you know, the previous slide shows more of the detail, but just the volume. So, I am interested to see when we, we start to use it next year, how, if you know, this trend, if we're seeing upward trend. Now, it's more usable with, you know, mobile phones, so I do think that people, more, there's more work orders being generated, whether they're being generated at, on the school side, the custodian side, or they're being generated with our staff. Because now, if we go into a building and quickly change something, we can enter that as a work order right there, real time. I don't know if there's any questions on the work order or the school reporting for the work order because the next slide is a transition to a different topic.
Any questions on the work orders? Diana, any questions?
I think, just to comment, I think it's going to be, it's going to be good to have this trend because we'll be able to see this when we're looking at the money allocation for any.
You can put, that's the thing, there's so much more we could do with this program. You can start, we can do, we are also starting to build out some preventative maintenance work orders with this too, so we can pre-plan work orders. We could do that before, but it was more manual. This is, there's a lot more ability to pre-program. We could put cost information, hours. We're not there yet with that, but at least in terms of planning of what we need to do for the year and what we've done, you could potentially put some estimated level of effort for what we've done. There's a lot, a lot to do. And I was thinking in terms of a trade, you could start tracking like, well, how many HVAC did we have this quarter? I assume they're higher in the, probably highest in the winter, so you could start tracking some of that. And is it a trend that our systems are aging too? So, it would be good to track as we plan for the upcoming capital years.
I think that's great because as we head towards, you know, this new school building and so on, people can see that there is a lot of work that goes into maintaining these older buildings.
Yes.
And I sometimes wonder, I mean, in the allocation of work between what goes for town buildings, other, other buildings versus the school buildings, there must be some way to tell that as well, quite a bit of it goes there.
Yeah, so we've tried to estimate before. I don't have any hard numbers, but I would say based on the square footage and also like priority sometimes too, I would estimate like 70% in the schools. And that probably includes the grounds too. This is an estimation, it could be a little less, could be a little more, also depends the time of year. I mean, there's a certain event or elections, we kind of shift to certain, we prioritize. But I would say that a lot of our effort goes into the school, so I would estimate between 60 and 70%. But that, that's just pure based on our kind of gut check of what we, where we see years, you know, a lot of times we're in the schools. We have so much square footage in the schools because I forget the square footage breakdown exactly, but I think it's close to that same percentage.
That's substantial.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask, like, on some of these, like, electrical, is it just a matter of getting the subcontractors in?
Well, electrical, we actually have a, we have a vacancy. We have, so we technically have two electricians. Brian Orso is our electrician, he's also our operations manager. And we had a previous electrician retire, I think it was in January. So, we've been trying to fill that position, unfortunately, just haven't been able to fill it, keep posting it. We do interview and it just doesn't, we just haven't filled that position. So, that's why electrical is down is because we're missing that person. We can outsource too, so that's the thing too, is this will help, that's actually the next step, is I want to look at this a little more closely and say, okay, what's our backlog and how do, do we need to outsource some of this stuff? And that, if I, especially if I can't fill a position. Or like long-term, do you need to add a plumber, add something? I know it's hard to add staff right now, but that's just, that's just resource loading, I guess, as to what our needs are.
Thank you. Any other questions on this report?
Really thorough work, it's really good.
Yeah. All the staff that are doing all these work orders. Thank you. All right, so the next update, and I thought it would be timely to give you this update. So, going back about a year ago, we did receive notice, maybe it was a little over, actually, it was going back fiscal, it was almost over a year ago. We received notification that we were, we were awarded a study, it was about $75,000 to complete this study. And it was through a state earmark. And what it is essentially is, you know, the town is committed to a goal of net zero greenhouse emissions by 2050. So, we, you know, through, this was initiated by the Clean Energy Committee. Also, you know, it's, it's now part of strategic planning and it's also, you know, recently the adoption of the stretch code. So, over, you know, new buildings have to be all electric, so it's electrification. We have, you know, electric vehicles, we're starting to implement that. And then it's, the question is, how do we, how do we get there? You know what I mean? So, especially when we talk about our buildings, like, how do we electrify our buildings, especially our old buildings? And, and so this, the purpose of this study was really just to, I call it a roadmap because it's really just to see like how, how, what's the order of magnitude? How do we lay out that roadmap to get to 2050? Because 2050 is not that, I mean, it's, it's a far away, but it's not that far away and how do we plan to get there? And we have nine, so we have nine schools. So, we thought that it would be great to do this for our schools. We also are starting this process for our town buildings as well. It'd be great to do it for a lot of our assets in town. So, this was really the first town adopted plan. I know some other communities did it, Acton had done this, completed a similar study. What's that, like, what's, what's the roadmap like and what's the anticipated cost? So, this is very high level, I just want to say it's based on assumptions, those assumptions or the industry could change. And the report, it's nearly 50 pages, it has a lot of, without the appendices, so it has a lot of, a lot of data in there. It is available on our website, link here on our solid waste sustainability website, there's a link, I think it's technically on the Clean Energy Committee's website. But this is available for download, anyone can review it. It gets into all the, the number crunching and the math of how they get to these recommendations. And really, it's basically, what's the level of effort, cost, and then what's the timeline for that? Next slide. So, so the report had many assumptions. And just to go over some of these assumptions, so reviewed existing heating, plumbing, electrical, building infrastructure, building envelopes. So, they had, you know, our total square footage, are looking at all of our energy loads on the buildings. They had all of our utility bills to understand what our buildings as they are, what energy do they consume to operate? They looked at the, also our DPW operations budgets to see, well, what do we spend in the schools to maintain the buildings? They also assumed a square foot, a dollar per square foot capital cost based on industry references to, you have, there's so much anticipated cost to, just to maintain a, a building, whether it be, it says capital planning, not panning. So, that, so that was, that was put into the, the cost estimate as well. And we do have solar panels on all, on eight of the nine schools except this building. So, that was factored in because it's not, I guess, if we didn't have solar panels, that could be factored as an opportunity to electrify, but we already have electric, solar panels on most of our buildings. And the electrification looked at air source heat pumps, just for the purpose of the study, there's obviously other methods you could use, you could look at geothermal, without making the, we want to, we wanted to make some assumptions. So, typical heat source pumps, so that's what we, we looked at, or air source heat pumps. And then, we all, so we have very old, you know, old buildings. So, with these upgrades, we also assumed that they have to be electrical upgrades and potentially some building envelope upgrades. That was part of the assumption. So, in terms of this timeline, this, and all of the math is in the report, is each school is broken down and what it takes to electrification and then the BAU is business as usual. So, if we don't do any electrification, you know, it's a gas, a boiler, basically, after 20 years, we have to replace. So, if we just do business as usual, we're going to be spending so much money till 2050. What is that delta to electrify these buildings? And so, we're basically completely net zero, have no gas connections to the buildings. So, each school is broken down. And I just want to note too, is South Row, you know, we're, we're looking at a new school for South Row. We wanted to do this analysis to show the existing South Row, what it would take to, you know, to eventually electrify under it being, the current South Row school. When we do a new building, there's more opportunity, we're required under the stretch code to electrify it. So, a new building has different opportunities. This is just based on, like, what would it take to electrify the existing South Row school? As, so, so based, the, the end result is, the delta is essentially $43 million of additional costs that we'd have to spend. And, and the next slide, I think, actually breaks it down a little better to show where, where's that cost? And so, so basically, the electrification requires a capital investment cost of $84.8 million versus the $41.4 million. So, that's the capital cost because not just is there, there, there's two parts of this analysis. It was a life cycle cost because what does it cost to operate an existing system from electrification versus gas? And what does it cost to replace it, maintain it? The separate cost, the upfront cost is that initial investment cost. So, that's substantial, so that 41.4, that's what you see in the orange here, that's that, that cost. And so, you know, we've seen, going back, maybe not right now, but we've seen some grant opportunities for electrification. So, that's really where we, I think we'd have to rely on some of that funding to be able to get past that. That's really the biggest hurdle, I see. Then you get into maintenance costs. And so, that, this is, gets into more industry assumptions, like what does it cost to maintain a gas, gas versus electrification? There's, there's industry reported figures plus the cost of electricity, the cost of gas, that could also change too by the time this, you know, 2050 comes around. But based on the current industry averages, we estimate $3.7 million in savings on maintenance costs. So, basically, it does, if you have an electric system versus gas system and working, and looking at all the, the fuel versus electric cost, it is, there is a savings, $3.7 million. That's over essentially the next 30 years. And then, what, and then the, so that, sorry, that was the maintenance cost. They all, then the electricity costs. So, the reason why there's an increase of $10.4 million for electricity is really because our building envelope. So, electric, electric, when you electrify a building, you want to have a very secure, you know, the structure, it's important what's, what's the structure. Our structure is very old. So, when we have, you know, looking forward to the new Parker School, that will be, have a very different building envelope that has a lot more energy-saving components in it that would, you know, you basically get your money's worth by converting to electric. If you have an old building, you, there's a lot of heat loss that you're going to be, or the energy is not, is contained within the building. So, these buildings that we currently have, you know, there's, they don't have the appropriate building envelope to provide for the electrification. So, that's something to think about is when we talk about, you know, it comes before a town meeting, like, think about geothermal, geothermal or other, you know, and electrification is really, right now, what I see is just, is when we do new buildings, that's really the opportunity. We want to try to see if there's any other opportunities, but, but this report's telling me is that it's just that such a large capital investment and maintenance costs associated because of the age of our, our buildings. And also in that too, our switchgear, the electrical load coming into the building, they're old in all buildings, so that, that $10.4 million also probably includes some, or actually, that was covered in the 41.4, but that's part of that capital investment and upgrade as well. And then, lastly, as part of this analysis, the natural gas cost. So, it does decrease by two and a half million dollars. It's still shown because it takes the next 20, we won't be completely off of gas until 2050. So, after 2050, that purple band should disappear, but it takes time to, to get there. And then through, so through all the analysis and looking at all of our backlog or what we've done for building upgrades, we looked at, like, this is what systems are due next. So, you know, we just recently did the high schools. So, the high school would not be until 2043 because that was recently done. In here, Parker Middle School, that would probably, I mean, that's 2028, but we also know that's an opportunity for a new building that we're pursuing. And then you look at, so a lot of the reason why we have some of these schools in here is we just recently completed boiler systems. McCarthy, we are just doing the boiler this summer, so that's why it's 2046. And so, that was how we came up with the, the anticipated timeline. We didn't break down, I guess, I didn't present the detail because if you think about the, the 40-plus million dollars over 20 years, that, I mean, it just depends. I think this is a helpful document to plan. Right now, I think we're focused on, if you look at short-term, it's Parker. And so, Parker, the cost information in here, in here, the cost information isn't accurate because hoping, hoping that we're looking for a new school. But at least it shows in here that the next electrification process would be the Parker School. And then behind that is, is South Row, like, what's the opportunity there? And this is just a high-level planning document, just to help us to see, how do we get to 2050?
This is really, really good.
If you, the report online is actually very interesting. It's a lot of number crunching, but the, if you look at their assumptions and how they got there, it crunches the data and it shows you, and I think it comes down to older buildings that is harder to electrify.
That's interesting.
Out of mine, we need to build a lot more new schools?
More schools, yeah. I mean, unless there's, unless the industry changes or if there's some grant opportunity, you know, to, to build infrastructure, that's really what we need. Because I don't, I just don't, we already have to spend, I mean, it's $84 million over the next 28 years and we have to spend 41 of that, but to do the, the upgrade, it's just, that's just a lot of money.
Want to point out one more thing, that I noticed the dates in the 30s, you know, 37, 38s, I will not be on the school committee then. So, let's just set them up right, so when they get there, they can make that choice.
Anybody have any questions on the electrification?
No, this was really good. I really appreciate this, the, the amount of work you put into this, no, I mean, I really learned a lot. So, thank you for that. I'm especially interested in capital and projects, so, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Your long-term planning just really helpful for school committee members for years to come.
That was really interesting, yeah.
Yeah, plus Director Clancy has a very beautiful supporting team today. This is great.
That's you.
Diana, any questions?
No, thank you for asking, that was a really helpful presentation.
All right, well, thank you very much then.
Thank you.
Thanks for saying, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks you as well.
All right, second item up tonight is Joanna, is just going to share the fiscal '25 end of the year financial report. So, this is for all the activity through June 30th.
Thank you. At the June, at the July 22nd meeting, I presented the preliminary results, but, and then said I'd go back and give you the final figures for fiscal '25. Our operating budget was $73,880,000. We spent $73,69,818.8. We have $810,181.92 in open encumbrances. And so, that means our budget was fully expended and encumbered. The grant and revolving fund summary had a little bit of a change. I told you that some of the revenue hadn't posted yet, so this June report reflects the final numbers for the grant revolving funds for the year. And then the student activity balances did not change since the last report. Those, those remain the same by sport and club. So, no, no big changes from last month's meeting.
Any questions?
I have just one, I don't know why I've never asked it before. Why do they need to keep so much money in those student accounts? I mean, high school, 244, almost $245,000. Why do they need to have that much money carrying over?
Well, they're allowed to carry it over and it's kind of class by class. And I think we have conservative people, you know, running the clubs. And I think too that they, you know, they cautiously do fundraising so that they have it available and then they don't always, you know, execute on everything. The largest one being the Theater Guild. They do make a conscious effort because they do raise the most through their ticket sales. And then Principal Murray is, you know, thinking of ways to, you know, spend it, maybe not have to raise so much money because we do have the balances. But, you know, that addresses your question.
So, I suppose like Theater Guild might come up with something really big-ticket item that would be worthwhile to have.
They try.
And that way, they know that they've been saving money for a while to possibly do that in the future?
Or do less fundraising, you know, because they do have such a balance.
That's what I wonder if they kind of consider, maybe take a year off sometimes because that's a lot of money.
Other questions? Diana, any questions on the budget report?
No, thank you. It looked pretty straightforward, thank you.
On the grants, is it true, well, things are looking a little rosier than it was last meeting in terms of some of those grants that we were talking about?
Yes, we did get our allocations on the 4th, I think. So, it wasn't really enough time to add it to the agenda item. So, we are pretty much similar funding to last year for the entitlement grants. We still haven't heard from the USDA yet, the federal monies for the reimbursement for breakfast and lunch. But for the entitlement grants, so Title I, the SPED IDEA, it looks like we're going to be close to level funding. And then we will, those are, those applications are due September 9th and September 30th. So, like Dr. Hirsch will be working on curriculum-type ones and then Amy Reese will be working on the.
Loves doing that stuff.
That's great, that's a relief.
No, it is, it is, it was good news, to hear that.
It was good news.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, should we take a motion to accept this as the final budget report?
I would.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we accept the, what would I call it, the budget transfers.
End of the year financial report.
Okay, as presented.
Second.
All right, Susan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, right. Thank you very much.
You want one of these?
None of them.
Yes.
You cover everything?
Next up, I believe, is.
Okay, nobody in that report, you got everything? Okay, okay. All right.
Okay, all right, so next up, we have the superintendent's performance evaluation. So, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for getting their parts of the evaluation in in timely fashion, made things much easier. I sent everybody a copy of the final summary over the weekend, so hopefully everyone had a chance to look it over. On the final summary, you have all the rankings that each of you gave the superintendent in the four standards, which are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture, along with overall rankings. I took everybody's comments to try to summarize them into an overall narrative along with some combinations and recommendations in the four assessment areas. So, rather than hold, read the whole thing, I'm just going to read the stuff, the summary, the one summary at the beginning, and then if anybody has any more comments, I would do that, so. So, for final summary, says this was noted in one committee member's comments. This year was a year when the Chelmsford Public Schools continue to move forward despite a financially, politically, and socially challenging period. While many local school districts have struggled with these challenges, the Chelmsford School District under the leadership of Superintendent Lang has not only survived but thrived. Financially, the school system remains on solid footing, not only in its local budget, but also in many of its reserve accounts. This is allowed for the growth of services and programming in a climate where other systems are finding themselves having to cut staffing and course offerings. Despite many students nationwide struggling to recover academically in a post-COVID era, those in Chelmsford continue to achieve at levels well above state and local averages. In the individual evaluations, committee, committee members all made note of the superintendent's effective handling of the district budget and successful labor negotiations with various bargaining units, which led to new contracts being ratified in a timely manner. Also of note was the superintendent's leadership in advancing major district initiatives, including the strategic plan, special education opportunity review, school safety improvements, and the ongoing collaborative, collaboration with the Massachusetts School Building Association for a new middle school project. Several committee members also commented about Superintendent Lang's growth in family and community engagement and his continuing effort to foster two-way communication and involve stakeholders in key decisions. Because of the stability and forward-thinking provided by Superintendent Lang, committee members found him to be proficient or exemplary across all four standards of his evaluation and given him an overall rating of exemplary for his work during the 2024, 2025 school year. So, that was this final summary. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything? John, you?
I'll keep it simple. This was also in my review, 1010. 10-10 work, let's go build a school, really great, great year. Thank you for that.
Anybody else want to add anything?
Brevity.
I guess, I wrote out what I thought. I know, I sent it along. It continues to be great to work with you, and I think that the challenges that we continue to face, that, you know, you take them on and you've been listening, are the things that we've been saying, which I think is really important. And so, for that reason, let's move forward.
And I'll, I'll say the same thing. I talked to you last week, and while there have been concerns, because we should continue to look for challenges that need to be improved upon, but I think through your leadership, we're doing really well here in Chelmsford, and I appreciate all the work
Thank you.
that you do to lead the district. I think we're in good shape.
Diana, any additional comments?
Yeah, thank you. I just really appreciate the responsiveness when things, as they inevitably will, come up that are areas where we all, you know, might have different perspectives. When I bring concerns to Dr. Lang, he's always incredibly responsive, and I have seen, even over the past year, a real move towards some of the things I was really excited to see us move in the direction of, a deeper look at the data about what is happening in schools on many levels, has really been a hallmark, I think, of this year, and I'm really appreciative of that, and looking forward to working with Dr. Lang in the year ahead.
Okay, great. All right. If there are no other comments, I'll take a motion to approve the evaluation.
I make, I move that we approve the superintendent's evaluation for '24, '25 year, school year.
I excitedly second. Slightly better than a normal second.
Susan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Maria?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
And I.
Great. Now, very briefly, thank you very much. I enjoy the, I enjoy the work here generally, but I appreciate the feedback and really working together to, to advance the district. So thank you for the comments. They're taken seriously and into consideration as we move forward, but I very much enjoy working here with you and with the team that we have supporting us all, so thank you and continuing to look forward to a good '25, '26 school year.
Great. All right. Moving on.
Moving on.
And thank you, Dennis, for putting all that together.
Oh, you're welcome. There's all your stuff, so I just said.
Many thanks.
A surprise, so.
It's really great.
Next up, Linda's just going to review a couple of additional changes to the student handbook. So could you walk us through those?
So in your memo, you'll see that there are a few changes that came to be. One was from our last meeting when we discussed some of the language surrounding attendance, and then also the addition of communication devices that connects with the cell phones so that we can kind of encompass all of the different communication pieces that are out there. Health services actually came to us after the fact. There's been some recommendations for changes in administering the medications, also some of the surveys that we do for students, and I went through it with Peggy Gump as well as our attorney, to make sure that we put the correct information into the health section. And then lastly, just given the tenor politically and some of the advice that we've been receiving from our associations and from, you know, other people that are going on to just add some information regarding curricular inclusivity, I made up, I made up that title, I just want to be very clear, so I'm open to any changes, to just make sure that we are stating that we are, you know, an inclusive district and that we will have our curriculum pieces. And if somebody does take issue with the issue with any of the curriculum, they can go through their principals and through central office as well.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on any of the changes from last time?
I have just a question for clarity on the medication. So many kids have asthma and need inhalers. Are there any provisions where older students are allowed to carry their own inhalers for use, or does everything have to go through the nurse?
The nurse has to know who has asthma, right? So I think that starts there. I can check with Peggy Gump, but there are some provisions of some students that can have their medication on them, and that's part of the process that was in this, that the attorneys put in there.
I just want people to be clear, because there are kids for whom a rapid, you know, a quick response to use that inhaler is necessary, and if they're old enough and responsible, and she knows.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of what the doctor puts in for their orders, and then they would work with the families, but I'll definitely get some clarification on that. I don't want to pretend I'm in charge of testing.
Sure, yeah.
Just thank you for incorporating the changes.
No problem.
Appreciate that.
And these do not affect the high school addendum, so that's why you don't see that on there. I made sure I went through that, because the, this main handbook is the handbook for the district. Those are just additional things that affect high school.
Okay.
I think you did a good job of rewording and summarizing what we talked about last time, so that we're all clear on what we mean.
Diana, any questions or comments on the new changes or suggested changes?
No comments, just, it looks all straightforward to me, thank you.
Okay, great.
We'll get these up on the, we'll do the translations, and we'll have them up on the handbook by the beginning of the school year.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve it.
I move that we approve the 2025, '26 family and student handbook with the updates as presented.
Second.
Okay. All right, Susan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Maria?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Hi, five zero.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Number five of the agenda tonight is Joanna's going to review a recommended budget transfer for fiscal '26. This is the coming year budget, or the current year budget.
You were just ahead, ahead of the curve.
I know. They separated out Joanna's thing, and I got all confused.
She almost made this decision earlier.
I know.
Oh, that's what you said.
And this is the only time this happened, so I separated out all the '25 stuff early of the agenda, and then we kind of shift into '26.
No, you were getting tricky.
That's why.
Give me that review back.
I didn't try to do that.
Keeping me awake.
Thank you. So before you tonight is a request for one budget transfer for fiscal '20, '26 in the amount of $27,915. And this is to purchase enhancements to the industrial arts classroom, so that's the wood shop at the high school, to include student seating, workbenches, teacher desks, and miscellaneous tools and equipment. If you may recall, as part of our one-time purchases in fiscal '25, there were some upgrades to the wood shop with walls and floors and safety lines and things like that, and once they got everything out of there and refreshed everything, Bill Silver came forward and said, you know, is this something we could, you know, shift from his computer services line item over to industrial arts equipment to complete this project?
Anybody have any questions about the transfer?
I do have one question. I am just, because this is a relatively large budget transfer early in the year, is this going to impact some of the things that were initially intended to be paid for under the computer services line, or is this money that, you know, we feel relatively comfortable will not be needed for the original contention?
Bill feels relatively comfortable. I do too. This computer services line also funds, like, our internet services, and we do receive E-Rate funds to help cover that, so we, once we know the E-Rate funds that we will get later in fiscal '26 and we do the transfer to the E-Rate, it's kind of like a little grant, you see that on the grant and revolving fund summary, this $27,000, we should be okay, because we'll, we'll be expecting, you know, probably around $80,000 or so in the E-Rate funds.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or, okay, we'll take a motion.
Okay. I move that we approve the FY 2026 local operating budget transfer from computer services to CHS industrial arts equipment in the amount of $27,915 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Susan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Maria?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
And I, five zero.
Thank you.
I'm trying to open my, Dennis, can you help me with this next one? I'm just trying to open my packet, but we had started to talk at the last meeting about possibly just doing some updates to the private school approval process, and I just need time to pull mine up, but if you want to talk.
Yeah, so, you know, at our last meeting, you know, one of the things we did talk about is the new private school and the approval process, and one of the things in, in looking at that, I looked at our old policy, and our old policy basically just says that, you know, we have to approve that they're meeting our standards, but it doesn't really get into any, the air right up here. Basically, according to statewide, should we approve a private school when it satisfies the structural program of the school equals that of the town's public school, thoroughness of efficiency, and progress made? That's it, that's, that's what our policy was.
I just want to say it's hard when the district is beyond equal, because Chelmsford is beyond equal, but continue.
Anyway, so, so, in looking at that, I wondered if maybe MASC had something that was a little bit more specific and, and kind of outline the process better, so if we do have people, as they are, that are looking to start a new school, that they would know what would have to be supplied. So I did look up, and I think I gave everybody a copy of this last meeting, what the MASC policy says, and as you can see, it's much more specific in terms of what a private school would have to supply to us, and then one of the things it does too is references a checklist that Desi has that I believe we used last time in looking at.
That's what we actually, we actually followed
Right.
this policy, even though it wasn't our policy. We followed the more thorough one.
Which I believe is in the next stage, next page is all the checklist. So what I would suggest is, you know, just so that it's clear, more clear than our current policy, that we adopt the, this policy or the MASC standard policy along with the checklist, and then, then everything is cut and dry.
That is much more, that is much more informative, yeah.
Right.
Right. I really, I think that's great.
Okay.
And outlines the steps, I think it's better.
Yeah.
Yeah. And to be honest with you, so when you even go to the Desi site, they say you basically, they recommend you just follow the checklist, so that's what we were doing anyway. So it's not like this, the school that's before us are going to come before us at some point, it's not like we're changing the rules on them, this is what we were doing anyway.
Yeah.
The MASC policy actually just lays it out much better, and I think it would be easier for anyone in the future coming forward to kind of know precisely what they have to do, as opposed to us, where it's just that little paragraph you had to guess a little bit.
Yeah.
So this isn't going to impact at all what's going to come before you for the new school, but in the long run, I do think it definitely helps with other schools who potentially would want to do something like this, so it makes a lot of sense.
I, I think it not only helps clarify the process, I think it also helps clarify for the public, that I know there's been a lot in social media about this new school, and that we are not delaying it just because we feel like it. There is a real procedure that has to be followed, and that's what we're doing. So now it will be clear and transparent what that is.
Yeah. And it's not something that happens every single day.
No, no.
So I'm, I'm moved that we adopt the MASC policy as presented for non-public schools and the acceptance of a non-public school, approving a private school.
Second.
Second, great. Any other questions?
No.
All right, we'll take a vote. Susan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Maria?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Hi, five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just what, since we're talking about policies, just, as everybody probably knows, the Senate did approve a cellphone policy, but it still has to go through the House. We still need to kind of wait and see what they come up with, if it's the same, if it's different. I know there's stuff out there in terms of what the Senate is saying, you know, they would like to see in it, but, you know, until we know for sure what the House version's going to look like and how long it's going to take them to come up with something, you know, just something to keep an eye on, I guess.
Okay. Great.
If I get alerts on something anyway as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, I believe that's all we have for our agenda, so I don't, anybody have any liaison reports?
I have one correction when you get there. I actually don't, for some reason, was I, I can't remember now, I looked at the meeting minutes from last, 7:22, and it says I'm not present?
You weren't.
You weren't.
I weren't, so I wasn't.
You were not.
I was not present. So I actually could not have seconded that vote earlier, we should probably fix that.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah. I would have had to abstain.
So John has abstained.
Do we have to redo the vote, or like, how did the?
Which one? Just approve the minutes?
Oh, they approved the minute?
Why don't we just redo it, it's a quick.
It's okay.
We approved the minutes as revised, with the vote as revised, no. I can make a motion again.
Make a motion again.
You can too, you're so capable, you can make a motion.
John? Okay, John, John, John was not present at the last meeting, so he is abstaining in this vote.
And he can't second it.
And I can't second.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the regular school committee, what?